...or, uh, the board of all the regular meeting for Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty here at six thirty, I have six thirty, so if I could get a roll call please, uh, Sarah.
Alderman.
By the way, happy, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Alderman Motley, your Alderman husband.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
Alderman Decker.
Here.
Alderman Rogers. Alderman Magley.
Yeah.
I'd like to form the firm and stand during the public police. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That moves us to four special presentations, and we don't have anything special present tonight, so that will not, nothing will go there. We will move right on to the public hearing for request of rezoning from R one to R two at four thirty-five South Jefferson Street. So that public hearing is open. I have not received anything, um, from anybody by email, after the U in any way, shape, or form. The only thing I received this week for comment from, since, now I'll deal with that comments and systems, so it's open for discussion for the lot that planes only had referred to us. All right, if the ones want to speak at the public hearing on that, close to that. That moves to actually, item six discussion, wastewater treatment facility pump, A is what we're at now, and, uh, ready for that.
All right, sounds like I was just here. Mike, I understand we got some bids from the pump rental company?
Yes. Um, the new pricing on that, uh, I'm gonna give you the monthly price, 'cause that's kinda how we're gonna probably have to figure this, it's fifty-seven hundred and twenty-three dollars a month. Um, I can't hear each other, some of my papers, but, uh, the price, if they do it...
Breakdown. I'll get it.
Uh, if one farmer gets everything, which if they do it, you're looking at about, if you did it for three months, we would have twenty-two thousand as half the share what they would have be done, it's forty-five thousand dollars for three months.
Was it multiple pumps for...
Yes, for, so forty-five thousand for, for two farmers? Yes. Yeah. If we get half of that, the twenty-two thousand five hundred and forty-nine would be the price that we would pay if we split it, and that's just what we're throwing out to you as an option. Uh, I will say, the Rhodes Farm has not been basin tested yet, which is thirty days, and then response, I know when Benoit's did theirs, it was twenty-one days to get a response, and it's gonna get busier and they're gonna, that's probably gonna be a little longer, so I don't think we're gonna have three months wrapped up and down. It may be a little cheaper, it may go down to like sixteen thousand that we may have to pay if we split it, and I keep saying that, 'cause we're just trying to figure what would be, what could we do to possibly help if we did.
Matt, I'll let you talk about what farmer you're gonna throw back.
Um, so I, I reached out to at least one of the farmers that's, um, probably gonna be the, the better candidate for this pump for all three months, which would be the Benoit Reservoir, which is done, tested, um, and started to fill. Um, I discussed with him that what, uh, Mike and Heather and I discussed was that they would split fifty-fifty, uh, basically fifty percent of the rental, delivery fee, everything included, and then, um, possibly negotiate with some of the fuel pricing to run the fuel pump. Um, he, he said that averaging probably with prices now, it's gonna be ten to twelve thousand for, for diesel fuel, for the, for the irrigation season. Um, so, just some numbers to...
And that's on top of the other picture?
Yeah, just some numbers to look at. At the end of the day, I did get contacted by, um, Alex Benoit, they think they may have had a neighboring farm with a pump that could work for their pivots, um, that might be a, a cheaper and, and better route, so we're still waiting to get some information on that, so this is just kind of a worst-case scenario of what we're looking at with these numbers, so...
Yeah, we wanna give you the high end, what it could be possibly, uh, so stay tuned.
So if the farmers don't, if they don't pay share cost equally with us with diesel fuel, it could, it's gonna be anywhere from thirty to sixty thousand dollars potentially is what I'm hearing with diesel?
I'd say that's pretty accurate time we do, if we did all of Benoit, which I've said we probably will, Rhodes probably isn't really lucky to get a month in, um, that's probably getting pretty close.
Okay. And, and do we know what, what that's doing to our, our budget?
Yes, we do.
Probably throwing it way out of whack.
But it's already in trouble.
Well, yeah, but I wanna, I wanna keep rolling the calendar where we're, where we're going with it, you know what I'm saying, as we go over here, because this is thirty thousand, this is thirty thousand dollars, next thing you know, you've got, you've got a big problem. We just need to make sure we understand where we're at, okay?
I can go into that. As of right now, tonight, we have one hundred and eleven thousand dollars in our contingency for the wastewater project.
Left, right?
Yeah. Okay, okay. Some of that, I believe, is gonna be spoken for by the electric companies, as we're getting, wanting to submit those invoices as well, which are eligible. We can do that, that could be up to forty-five thousand worth of correct play with electric.
Wait, so...
We're still waiting on one, uh, utility to answer on that, so you can see that one eleven is, is dwindling down. Actually, that's what it was when I started. Uh, we haven't had any positive change orders yet on that, but, um, we had low budget and that's what we started with.
That's forty-five K for the electric, our electric company?
Uh, the, no, it's for good electric and consolidated electric to extend out to the farmers, out to the, the pivots, so, yeah. So we're at a hundred and eleven today, obviously, if you guys chew off sixty, we have no contingency left to the project. And we have things going on at the basins that are gonna definitely require contingency, as you know, we'll get into that as well. So, I did talk to DNR today, because I, I looked over at the drinking water project, over on that project, we have a hundred and forty thousand left in contingency, a hundred and eleven of that are our fees that went under, so we have a hundred and eleven in engineering left over there, about twenty-eight, twenty-nine over there in, uh, contingency on the construction, so about one forty, and I asked again today if we could get that moved over to this other project, and I still don't have an answer on that, I hope they can, so...
Be extremely helpful.
That would be really helpful to do, 'cause the voters approved seven point eight million dollars for these two projects, we're underwriting on the water by about a hundred and forty thousand, would be nice to have that come on over to the wastewater, so if we don't need that, it's gonna be hard to complete the project with them alone that's provided. Okay, um, if there's more discussion on that, I could, I could go into the basins at this point, would that, would we wanna keep talking about the pumps, or do we wanna go into the basin discussion?
I mean, what is, what do you guys think about, um, the fifty-fifty split, is it something you're interested in, I mean, there, we're in a, a little bit of a pickle right now with, with water, uh, supply, we're pretty full in our northeast and east, in a month, month and a half, they may start watering a little bit, they do some early planting, so that's gonna free up a little space, so, but if, if we have to hold for more than that month and a half, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in trouble, 'cause we don't have our, our relief valve that will overflow.
Pump was the way they were doing it last week, at some point, we're gonna have to pump, and...
If we can get Rhodes Pond, it will help some there, but we've got a big pond, if we can fill that, but we gotta wait until we get approval on that, and then we'll put two foot in to start with, and then...
Mr. Martin, have we ever figured out anything to go forward with getting the Douglas Farm pivot up and going, I know we were having trouble with that Z fitting.
Oh, the piping?
Yeah, to hook up, I mean, 'cause if we can get that to, to a point where we can pump to there, then we have a little bit of room to...
Yeah, I think we can use mechanical joint stuff and get that going.
Yeah, I agree.
We, we...
Okay, yeah, 'cause that's, that's gonna help tremendously if we get that thing going.
So I think to answer your question about what we thought about, I absolutely think we would all believe it'd be great for us to split that with the farmers that are getting the benefit of, of, of the, uh, of the system and being our partners in this thing as well, so, I mean, absolutely, I think we would all agree it would be great to be able to have that happen, if we can. Seems like to me, though, in initial discussions, it was...
Well, I know everything, they've got a lot of cost into it too, and they got a pretty good gig going on, I hate to say it, but they really do, so I wanna make sure that I understand how much we're, it benefits us, they know all that, it benefits them greatly too, so I think it comes down to it, and if this other pump works, we're gonna be very...
That'd be helpful, really helpful, okay.
So if the other pump works, we're only at a random pump?
Right, depending on Rhodes...
At least, yeah.
Or maybe a month of, of running.
Would they have to pay for diesel?
Pardon?
Would they have to pay for diesel pump?
That's what we're doing.
And that's, well...
It's cheap, I know, so it's not a big deal, right?
Tell me where you're feeling, uh... I don't see how we have much choice, we're gonna have to get rid of the water.
Well, we gotta finish the project, and, and to finish the project, we're gonna, we can't have, we hold the water, if we, if we get a lot of rain, we'll have a problem real quick.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
And if they can't, if they can't, yeah, we, we get a problem.
So, so right now, just so operation-wise northwest, we have it pumped down, so we, we're starting to pump water from this system out to that system, just to kinda help us move water, we're just going in a circle right now, but if we start getting rain and, and some big gulliwash, we're, we'll be, we'll be in trouble, so...
And by pumping it out there, it shortens the distance out to Benoit's Pond, which is where we need to go, it's going with it, shorter distance.
Move on from there. Okay. I'd get to root on that, I would say yes, try to, I'd say yes, try to negotiate.
We'll keep you on, on track with it.
Okay, moving over to the earthen basin, you guys had asked for a schedule from Fisher when he was here one week ago, and this page with the green bars is what he's provided, so I wanted to pass that out to the council, since the council had asked for that. It started last week, and there's showing that it would be completed within eight weeks.
Including testing, based on that?
Including testing.
This is what we asked for, and they've gotten to this this time, so...
So that means if they believe it'll be done testing in eight weeks, unless we got more than twenty days worth of rain that they can't work, there should be no reason for another extension, other than the known issue that we have.
How much water do you have put in testing?
How much water, two feet of water?
Two feet.
Okay, so the last time I was here, we talked about Terracan being on site, and I had a report on your desk there, this one signed and sealed by a professional engineer, that's good, and I can, I can summarize this pretty quick. So what they, they give us, in this report, it says there's two things we can do. Dig out the unsuitable soils to three, to two feet deep below, so here's the liner, the liner is nineteen inches thick and compacted clay, right now, we're at zero, we're here, we're below at the bottom of the layer, they say go two feet, put a grid in there, and come back with three inch rock, that's option one. Option two, start at that point, go three feet, no grid, come back, so two options. The option one would be the cheaper option, the grid is cheap relative to aggregate. Of course, they recommend being on site when that happens, and at the end of it, they'll provide a...
They'll, they'll give us a written sign-off that it's done correctly and, and engineered to their specification and to be, be fine.
That's right. I understand...
What if it doesn't work? What if the bank, the bank is sloping off now, there's a crack in it, probably might probably be that part?
Yeah, I'd say two, three inches wide.
On the west bank, so what happens then?
Have we seen that happen?
And it's starting on the south bank, too.
How big of an area do we have to do this, uh, excavate?
Says a forty about fifty area, is what they've identified here.
And that's in the floor of the basin?
That's...
And we know that, so you don't have to dig out a part of the berm that you already have there, it's just, just in the floor?
Not yet, unless they can't find the end of it, and they get into berm.
It's probably six split up the berm and it's sloped off, crack that big, six split up the berm.
Then in the additional comments at the end, they're recommending, so they're saying that construction traffic to vibration is driving that water up through the dirt and getting it to where it's unstable, so they're saying, put a static roller, no vibratory, sometimes the rollers have a vibratory function where you can turn it on and it'll pound the, the dirt into the ground even harder, they're saying keep that off of there, um, do minimal traffic, so, that's what they're saying is the culprit, is the more the traffic is on there, the more the water comes up.
Do you have a cost estimate to do these two old tractors?
I do not, and it would be hard to generate one, because, well, we could ask the contractor to assume an area and generate it off of that, but right now, we don't know exactly until we get into there, this has not been shared with the contractor, I just got this today.
Depends on the area, you could start out, you could give them one area, but you get, they know how much material they're gonna have to move, they could give you an, an idea of price there, but then, then depending upon, if that, if that doesn't get to good margin, basically, right, you gotta dig till you get to good margin, just like cutting out cancer, you cut it out, you gotta have clean margin all around it, you have to have good, good dirt, or, or strata around where you're gonna, so that's, that's the question, right? Bull damage, that's where, that's where the variance comes in.
Probably mean more so the footprint going down.
Yeah, the way you're gonna have, 'cause you're gonna know what the depth is by what you choose to do.
So, I don't know if the council wants us to proceed with it, Terracan's ready to start tomorrow, they're ready to observe this and, and keep this track, on track, on schedule. Obviously, they're gonna have charges, they've been sending everything to us at this point on this project.
What does Crockett say about all this? 'Cause they're the original engineers, correct?
Crockett is working for the contractor and, uh, testing the contraction and all that.
So, will they, I mean, so we don't have to worry about them, they're gonna, correct?
They, their reports are getting submitted, but they're not, um, they're not giving us any recommendations, but I think the contractor's...
They're quality controlled?
They're, they're quality controlled, the contractor's not wanting them to give recommendations, 'cause they don't wanna get into that, they want us to tell them what to do, for good reason, you know, they're just trying to perform, so...
With Terracan, is there a, is there a warranty or, or performance bond based upon their supervision of this project, this part of the project?
I would have to go into their terms and conditions, a lot of times, there's a limited liability, um, and I, a lot of times, it's a fee, which is typically very low in geotech, I'm just, I, just from what I normally see, I don't have the terms and conditions for, for our master service degree.
We have a master... The recommendation's wrong, and we spend the money and Jacob's rig's like, oh, forty by fifty, and total of rock, and have the same problem, we can't get the contraction, we have to do something else, it's all our dime.
It is a risk, and they're, they have enough wording that, because it's earthen, it's the ground, and it's, there's enough wording in here, else they do bankrupt, you know, I mean, they have to protect unservedy, and so they, they're not gonna take and guarantee anything that comes of dirt, everything, if you read this, there's a lot of wording in these recommendations, and based on what we saw, and based, you know, so...
Our visit three weeks prior to May nine.
But if this doesn't work, what happens, I'm sorry, I still have an, I've heard an answer to Landon Magley, this question, and I, I mean, I think that's something the council needs to know, if Terracan's solution does not work, what is the next solution the city needs to pursue?
What damn grass seed might it be?
Is that it?
Let's, or move the berm, there's a, there are four choices outlined last meeting, and one of them is to abandon what it is, abandon the, that particular word, move the berm out of this area.
We spent about two hundred thousand on this berm, some of it was...
Right.
Yes, we did. It'd be a good one to move. The way it was designed, without this basin, was enough for twenty years, for twenty-five years, twenty-two years.
Twenty years.
So, what happened was, you know, to bring it kind of speaking...
To get it slow.
The basin, the upper basin, with it alone, was designed for twenty-year, uh, expansion of, of water, the, uh, storage, okay? So, this came in, and we had the, the budget money to be able to put this lower basin in, all the same money that we, we had been approved for, and then we've got the point, the lower basin is the problem child, so we can get home, we get finished with the upper basin at this point, and walk off from this one if we want to, so I don't know, I think that's what you got, you know, I know we're close, but I, I don't know, I mean, do we, do we, we, we throw the dice and keep...
But it's gonna cost some more money, 'cause they gotta run that pipe, back, they gotta run that pipe clear to the first basin.
That's right.
So that's gonna be a change order, 'cause they gotta run that pipe clear to the top basin, and buy more pipe.
Oh, if this doesn't work, and we were to abandon it?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, right now, it's designed where the upper basin gravity flows to the lower basin, that one has the suction line to it to be pumped out, so then, if you're gonna, if you're gonna delete the bottom basin, then everything that that bottom one does is operational, has to go to the top.
So we could still make it smaller?
I don't know, you, I don't know that it would be worth it, it's already pretty small from what it is.
Money-wise, move that, that berm wouldn't be...
It would be cost, because we can make some, towards the side, I think that's almost possible, but, good, okay?
I think there's some, there's some doubts in my mind as to what this solution says on this paper, the sign and seal here in, in front of us, the recommendations from Terracan, I have doubts, just like Landon has doubts, but they're, they're, they're the ones saying, they're the experts in this, in this field, and saying that it will work, and I asked specifically to the people that, Jennifer, that was there, does, does you, do you and your bosses think we need to move the berm, and the answer was no, which was, I thought that's where we were headed, because of the doubts and, and I'm pretty risk averse, um, but in this case, I didn't think it was necessary.
Oh, it's standard, we're already broke. You said you thought the three-foot deep holes without the grate's cheaper than the other?
I think two feet with grate is cheaper than three feet without.
What about abandoning it? It's not what any was really wanting to do, 'cause we liked having it, but...
Abandoning it's not zero either.
Right.
What do you think the cost estimate would be to do that? Do you have an idea?
Uh, abandoning?
Yeah, for the pipe that you're talking about, because if that's more of a sure number, I'm not sure we don't wanna stay with a sure number at this point versus doing this, with their wording in here, this is a stamp steal, we take this, we own this now, and if that fails, it's on us, we're not getting that for Terracan really, you're gonna be in a lawsuit, and if they're wording, and, and if it's the maximum PO, basically, or whatever their service is rendered, you know, they charge you for, is, is their, their part of it, um, we get into this and have another, I don't know, seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars, and I don't know. What is the size of the smaller one compared to the larger one?
At this point? I'm like, I'm, I don't have numbers ready to throw me in the drawing, I'm gonna guess four to one, would you guys say four?
Four times a second?
Four to one.
I've got a drawing that y'all did in there in my office, just a quick visual, I'm gonna get that.
I think abandoning would, would be under fifty thousand, 'cause there's gonna be some grading and some pipe work.
But you think you could abandon, we could walk off and, and, and all from the grading and the pipe work and...
Without having to, any drawing, just got checked right here, I'm gonna say it's under fifty, if I had to throw a number out.
If you had to throw, you have to check, or...
I don't know, but pipes are outrageous.
Yeah.
What size of suction line is that?
Is it steel pipe?
This can be seen.
Yeah, probably, ten or twelve.
I would say if you abandoned it, then you up, go down and put a Y in there, leave that suction line in there, in case we ever want to get it up and going, and run a suction line to the top basin, and put a valve in there where we could shut the top, you know, where we can valve it off, that would be, if you're gonna abandon.
Yes, I would definitely leave it for future, you know, if, if the money's there later on down the road to, to have it on, I mean, I think it would be silly not to do that, but...
Does that make she worth in your estimate?
'Cause I would wanna see that it would be graded properly to drain out, right now it's graded flat, and I would wanna see a slope on that so that it would drain.
Well, that's what we expect, right, by DNR?
For the one we...
If we abandon the lower one.
I don't know if the DNR would, but I, I would think it would be rock wise, too, so, the other, the other option I just thought of, I thought of it for this thing, we could do the lower one and, uh, just put, put water in. You know, don't, don't put thirteen feet of water in it, put four, four or five feet in there, and just, you know, you're lowering your risk a lot, and it's, it's, it's still...
But you're still gonna have to redo that suction line, put four, but, it's higher than four or five feet.
I'd have to look at the elevations on it, but it's maybe go down to two feet.
The water is?
Yeah, we're, we've, we designed, I believe, two feet of water in all of them, just to keep them, not from drying out, so, I think it would work out, I think we could try to mitigate some risk with that, uh, consequences failure.
See, then we put four foot in there and not get to this area that needs to be dug out, hundreds of acres?
Yeah, basically, you move a smaller berm in closer and avoid it, so you don't have to build a thirteen-foot tall berm, but the pipe, it would be a long story, man, it's a question of timing, so, sorry, I, I didn't know, I just sort of, just kind of thought of it.
I'm not sure we gained, I understand they're the specialists in that, but I don't know, I don't know how much we're gaining with Terracan at this point.
My concern is we're already budgetized.
Absolutely.
If we spend money and do this, you know, one of their recommendations, and it doesn't work, we're just gonna have to spending the money to abandon it anyway, we don't need it to get the objectives of the project, and there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears put into getting what's done there, and, and it's...
At this point, it's, it's fine.
Well, I, 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 I think we should be written as risk averse as possible at this point, to be quite honest with you, I'm not, I'm not excited about him, but, with, with taxpayer money and, and a project we have, we're up against a soon a little ready, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about that part of it, and if we've got what we need for twenty years, and preserve this to where in the future, say, eight years from now, at some point, there was a need to, to expand, we have this as an expansion possi, possibility with engineering already done, correct?
The grading is done.
Yeah, so...
It's a matter of, well, somebody did in there the soil and...
And, 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 so you're, we, we wouldn't lose completely everything that we've done, gained, 'cause it's been a cost, but we wouldn't be at, at risk of, we'd be at the fifty thousand dollar, whatever cost to get the pipe and the, the thing done.
If it's fifty thousand dollars.
I thought that it's only ten or twenty, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, in this setting, I'm putting high, 'cause I don't know.
Well, we, we probably need to, I mean...
Let's get that number.
I think we gotta have that number, that question, to know what we're dealing with here, and I'm gonna say if it's under fifty thousand dollars, I think we, we walk away from the, the lower basin and, and cut our, cut our investment at this point to get finished and, and get to the finish line on this thing, because I'm as sure as heck hate to dig, dig down and get this liner and do all this stuff, and that solves the problem.
Then you have a contractor that desperately needs this change order, uh, then you have a contractor that desperately needs oil compensation, and so I think that, I don't know that I would want, we could turn them loose on a bunch of extra work. And so, I think that, I don't know that I would want, we should turn them loose on a bunch of extra work.
No, I, I, no, I, I understand that. So, my point is.
I mean, if you did it, you'd have the time and material.
If we abandon this, Gary, um, how much say do we have in how we, we say that how it's, how it's left when they pull out? Is that something that we can really detail so we don't just have somebody out there with a dozer that blows the berm out and walks and?
I would, I would, we need to detail it out. I would say we'll leave all the berms in place except for the lower, in that corner.
Okay.
And open it up and let that slope out. We don't want to exchany any water anywhere and.
I agree with that.
So many grass.
Just leave that.
Bury that bottom area.
Wait, what's lost?
Well, I mean, the rest of it, because that water's gonna go right down to the rest of it if we open it. So, grave as much as possible and then open it up.
And, and they'd be done with it. We, we don't lose anything more than, than, of work that's been done there. But we wanna to leave it where it flows and runs, hasn't, hasn't, uh, uh, the grave did, the dippies.
I think that would be the cheapest way out. At the point we're at right now, I think that'd be the cheapest way out.
Well, I think that, I don't know what you all think, but I would, I would entertain a motion that if it's under fifty thousand dollars, if you can make it twenty thousand, that's what we want it to be. But I don't know. I mean, that's the pipe, we don't know. Might get surprised. I think we gotta find out what it costs for us to, to walk away from the basin, lower basin.
But we have unit prices already from them. So, what I'm gonna propose we do is go back to those unit prices that they did and I'll qualify it and use the units already provided. And try to change order to where units in, rather than say, we have a new thing.
No, 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 understood. To, to tag on where we go.
Low people down.
Right. So, find out what that is and get it back to it. But I would want for us to, to get, I mean, how much does this hold us up if we wait? Do we, do we need to have a special meeting or, or what do we have to do here? Or can we agree tonight that if it's under an extra amount of dollars, that, that the mayor has the, the way to decide off on? You know, I'm just asking for the time sake of.
Let's take a look at our schedule here. Starting on May ninth, they have until, they have four and a half weeks. Four weeks in the upper. So, today is the sixteenth, so they have three more weeks in the upper basin, according to this. So, we're not holding them up for three more weeks.
No, no, I understand, but I'm just saying that, so, so we can find out about it, but.
We, let's find out about it. When's your, yeah, a week, two, uh, meeting two weeks from now, roughly?
Uh, once a month. This, this one comes up, the second and third Mondays in a month. We have two meetings.
We're three weeks out.
We're three weeks.
It's the thirteenth of June.
Thirteenth of June. I'll follow up with the staff and then we'll decide if there needs to be a special.
Yeah, let's, uh, at least we won't hold up anything. So, I mean, we have to put together a special meeting, we just have to do it. And you can get us those numbers back, what you think. You can qualify that we can add.
Yes.
Tag on to the.
That's what I, that's what I'm gonna go for. I'll, I'll do it that way.
Good luck with that. I hope that.
But that don't happen.
They may not want me to do it.
I bet that don't happen.
Because those prices have changed.
But, but they might do it with a, with a butter adder, the one if you went and bought it. How there's a lot of stuff lights up again. Because we've done business with it, so. See what you can do on that.
Okay. Let's see, ahead, what are we at here on our agenda?
We've got some basins, some new basins now. And the slaker.
Okay. We go, I think we're done on wastewater for now, right? Okay, let's start about drinking water.
Let's do this.
Like I said last time, the good news about the drinking water is way under budget. The bad news is we got a slaker issue. And you remember last time when we were here, a week ago, we had a letter that the city sent to our general contractor stating that they were not performing with the slaker. And the slaker Saturday morning, I got a text from Mike that it clogged up. So, some things that I'm concerned about right now with dates. Let me just throw some dates out for everybody to, to stew on a little bit. About a year ago, but it was, it was just less than a year, about July something, we have this down. Around July, we started this plant up. Okay, that was the first day that everything ran. Most contractors, most contracts will fight you and say, that is the beginning of my substantial, that was substantial completion, that's the beginning of my one-year warranty. Now, we can argue with them and things about different dates and when it really did work good, it was really, you know, really coming along or what was it doing. But if we go back to the most conservative date, it was about eleven, ten and a half, eleven months ago. So, we're approaching the one-year warranty. The bonding company stands with us, protects us for one year. So, we're kind of really close to that.
Well, we make sure we beat that dead level of that question at this point, to be quite honest with you.
Now, the slaker has a two-year warranty on it, but I, I don't, I want the protection of the bonding company. And I'm afraid they're gonna limp across that finish line.
Well, they're, they're, I think that's why they've been dragging it out. We've been giving, let's try and get it to run. We've done this, it's been magic, it's been going on. Hell, it's only run thirty, it, it doesn't even run thirty days, has it?
Ten times.
One time. At how many months?
Eleven.
Yeah, boy.
Right on schedule.
I remember it was like that at work and how I made gold for my sales territory, I wouldn't have a job. The problem is, you all have documentation from a meeting, correct? And the comment was made in that meeting, if we'd have known it had to be at this low of perform, uh, tons or pounds of, and whatever, they, they would have quoted it. Because they don't have one that size.
That's right.
That small size.
That meeting was recorded.
Okay, good boy. There you go.
Well, it's on their server, but I have a proof that it was recorded.
Well, don't you go to discovery?
So, I captured that because I, that it's there. So, I'm, I'm aware that it was recorded. I remember being recorded. I put that.
Well, it hasn't performed. We, it, we've spent all kinds of man hours and time fooling ourselves. People have to come in on the weekends because it was caked up. They showed that picture that I seen yesterday, ridiculous, worse than it's ever been. And it's like concrete. And, uh, it's time to move on with this thing at this point. You sent the letter, I seen. They had the letter.
Here's, here's where, here's where, we're in uncharted waters here. I asked our water engineer, a man driver of a whole company, that's thirty-some years of business, and he's never seen us have a, a piece of equipment out and replace it. Now, I, the documents clearly say they have to continue to fix this, fix it, fix it, fix it. What I don't know about is, is there, is there a way to say, okay, now, that's thirty times in, I need you to replace it. It's broken down thirty times now. Change it out with a new one. That's uncharted waters and I'm sure there's gonna be a huge, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost them three hundred thousand dollars. A piece of equipment's two hundred. It's at least a hundred electric flooring. So, for three hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna throw some of those. And it's gonna get pretty rough, I'm sure. But I know from our spec standpoint, we're on solid ground. But it's still gonna be a costly fight, I'm sure. So, we gotta start with Martin and then, you know, I know he's already started, you know, there's, there's some words that are thrown out that I know it's gonna be a fight. So, or, I guess, are we ready? Because I feel like now, it's, now's the time because none of those dates have expired.
We don't, we don't.
I think we're ready. Three months ago.
We, we've worked with them in good faith. They haven't responded to your letter. We can show on multiple occasions where they have shown no concern to manufacture for the product that's been put in our plant out here. And I think we can, there's absolutely a very compelling case that they have failed, the performance of their system has failed, and it doesn't meet the specifications of what's needed for our plant to run. I think we have lots of documentation to be dug up for this. I don't think we're asking for a handout or something that, we're asking for anything unreasonable. And in good faith, by the U C C code, we have done our part. I don't believe they have.
I would agree. And I think you're gonna win ultimately.
I understand that we may have a, we have a match for a while, but that's gonna be part of it. What, what choice do we have? Because the fact is, it does not work. They put six or seven heaters in this thing and you said you put one in twenty-five years in the old one that was steel, everybody was staying with steel. So, I mean, th- this isn't gonna go away and, and, and it doesn't work. They, they, they welded it, cut and added and tried to, it's not the same piece of equipment anymore to do.
No, they butchered it all to pieces. I know that, I'm, I'm ready to help, I'm ready to help you guys with this. And you're on solid ground, I expect, like, I just, I don't know how to initiate this.
You're gonna have to proceed on the performance bond is what you're gonna do. You have to file a claim, file a piece of litigation against performance bond and name the performance bond holder, the surety as, as a party and directly sue who is the man, is it Valdyne or Val?
Valdyne.
Valdyne, thank you.
So, Martin, yeah. It goes from Martin to abandoned engineering to Valdyne.
Well, it's gonna be, uh, you're gonna sue under the Missouri, it's gonna be for failure to perform for fitness for the intended purpose. You're gonna sue Valdyne, you're gonna sue them all. That's what you're gonna be, you're, you're, surety's gonna be sued, Martin's gonna be sued. I hate, I wanna keep this somewhat narrow because this is being recorded, but I'm just letting you know on the air to have, that ultimately Valdyne is going to be who's responsible as you move up the chain. Because the surety is gonna interplay and sue Valdyne all the way down. I mean, this is, it's gonna be a mess. I mean, you are absolutely correct. This is gonna be a costly, litigious mess. And I mean, I don't think you guys are gonna have an answer for a good solid two years. I mean, that's about how long these things take by the time you get started through discovery, through back and forth. So, I mean, what's the solution in the intervening two years while we're sitting here duking this out?
I mean, I agree with that.
You deal a hundred and forty thousand in tangency. A two hundred thousand will buy the, the Tinko unit. You're close to getting the new one ordered in purchase and getting it. It's gonna have a, a long lead time. And if you know that's where you're headed, I don't know what loses leverage and what doesn't, but that's what makes me nervous is ordering it and.
Well, we can't order it right now. I mean, your, my legal advice, depending on, you know, how we end up doing this, at this point right now, we, we cannot, if this goes to litigation like that, do that at this point. We have to put everybody on notice, including the surety first and foremost, that we feel that we're gonna proceed forward. So, we can't yet go that step. I mean, this is gonna have to be filed and started before we can proceed to that step. Now, if we can show that the situation with the slaker is such that it is creating a dangerous situation to the community members and they're, you know, getting the drinking water, or this is somehow creating further injury to our system somehow, then maybe we can. But I don't know if I've heard that information yet, so.
Technically, you'd be encroaching pipe and stuff. There's a lot of something going on. Forty weeks to get to other, regardless, right now, so. At one point, what Chris said, when Heather sent the letter out saying we, they got six months, Nick Barton made the comment, he said they never responded to the letter at all. Like, are you serious or anything? It's just they didn't do anything. I was supposed to have a text tonight before the meeting. I said, I need something. He said, I got them supposed to be sending something if they respond. They did not respond again, so. They're about as dumb as us as I think we are with them, right?
Martin has or Valdyne?
Martin has this wastewater project as well, but keep that in mind. They have subsequent work and a lot of it.
Well.
But, uh, just that far.
And he's frustrated. He's not getting any response. It's always been a service issue and he's not getting answers either, so.
Problem is, is just so everybody knows, Tinko, the one you guys had in there was the one we did, the base of design. And Martin shows Valdyne to say, obviously, to make them more competitive. And that's not the city's fault. But they said they can meet the spec and the documents they submitted were, uh, did meet the spec, the papers they submitted. But they have not been all performed. So, it's just breaking down. When it runs, it does, it does tend to work, but it doesn't run for very long.
It ain't ran long enough to find out if, if.
Before this one year expires, I think this is, this is the time if there's something to be said. So, I know you have a two-year warranty, but I don't want anything to run out, any of the chances.
Let's get it under the box.
I opened up, I don't see a route at this point.
No, it's, uh, this is the time.
So, we're in agreement on that, I mean.
I think what you need to do candidly is I'm gonna ask Heather to send everything to me because I haven't been, I haven't looked at the performance bond language. I haven't looked at everything, you know, from time, I mean, I thought you'd get some pieces of this, but I really need a little opportunity, your legal counsel, to review this. This may require a special meeting, especially, can you give, can someone give me a hard and fast date of when that date is so we know when that year runs? That's the key thing for me tonight is I need to know that hard and fast date of when that one year runs. You may not have it tonight, but maybe by first thing tomorrow.
Well, let's, I don't wanna guess.
Yeah, that's, I, I don't want you, that's why I said I need a hard and fast date. So, maybe sometime tomorrow, get me what that date is so we can start working it backwards. That way I can look. And then you guys have all the information. I will write up something, giving me what I think we ought to do and. But I really need to look at this stuff because I don't want him shooting from the hip. I don't want to shoot from the hip on this. This is when we're gonna have to put some eyeballs on.
Yep.
I'd like to play the documentation, go, go, analyze and figure out what you think, so.
So, what do we do in the meantime?
And we operate for.
We're gonna, we're going to try and clean tomorrow and get, uh, get it back to possibly operating. Problem is, the moisture has went all the way up into the line then, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a job. So, we're gonna try to get it going tomorrow. And I'm just milking it, I guess. On that subject, do you want him doing it? Nick Barton will send people to do it. It's gonna be a nasty job. That line is so caustic. It's hard to breathe and stuff.
I think they should do it.
They should do it. It's hard, it's probably something to work.
I would say if it's anything that Martin should do, they should do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't need to do no more work to it.
I know why our people are certainly damaging, injuring due to something to it. They come back and say it's on us. So, Martin should be handling this. If they, if they can, Martin should be.
He said he would get people here, so. We're a little hesitant for a few reasons. One, you're gonna have to tell them step by step what to do, but it's not what they do every day, but that's, can be done.
And so, limp along, but, you know, as we limp along, I guess the question is, you know, I guess we can limp along till we don't get to the pass the day. At that point, we'd use the system.
At that time, it's running basically like a, a water district. They do lime solvents, they chlorinate and some.
So, you won't, you won't use the, you won't use solvent?
Right. It'll, it'll be how we work temporary throughout the project.
I understand. Well, that's what we would do until it's get resolved at that point. Longer terms, I think what I was wanting, that's what he was asking me to do. So, when we get down to this, the deadline comes up, we, we file, whatever grievance we have at that point.
These people will have contact chances, of course, with some of their treatment and stuff, uh, the water. Car washes will need to be notified because it's gonna affect their chemical, so.
Okay.
So, is there a way to bypass it if they don't wanna necessarily pick it up at some point? Are we?
As far as what? Well, if we can keep it going, kinda like what it happens, more reaching temperature, but it was at least putting some lime in the system, so.
Yeah, but if it gets to the point that you guys are working on it, it's.
Well, that's where we're at right now. So, it's nothing out of the ordinary. I mean, it, it, we can, we can make it run and every time it just.
I think at some point, that's gonna, gonna be available to us. Because they're not gonna fix it. They're not gonna work.
Right. Once the heaters go out again, it's.
Once this gets going. We'll have a system that's their system that we, we say we don't want to function.
Be really nice to get that thing up full of that space.
I think we will probably.
We need, we'll need our fe- feedback.
I'm, I'm gonna hurry, but like I said, I've got another hard and fast date. That's, that's absolutely the most.
But I think it's what it has to say. So, yeah, so you give us.
He tells me the hard and fast date is tomorrow.
It's not tomorrow.
Okay. I'm saying, he tells me it's tomorrow.
I have here in July, but I don't want a, a real date.
Okay, one little, they are wanting to have a meeting. They're trying, Martin's trying to set up a meeting, have the president of the company fly back in. He's been here one time, yeah, no, no. That was supposed to be part of my response tonight that he would do that, so.
Is he, does that committed? Are they doing that?
I think, I think we need to meet with him, at least show a little, I wanna hear what he's got to say, his reasons. He may put, put this down.
I'm, I'm gonna advise his legal counsel at this point, knowing what we know, I would say little and let them talk. And if you can record it, audio, not video, audio, that should be done. But I would not speak very much. I would, I would, I would be there to listen and to hear what they have to say.
And I know he told his guys out there at the plant the same thing, so.
And please make no admissions. Anybody. No admissions. Sorry. I mean, this is now all I'm, no admissions, just. I would advise that for anybody.
So, you know what you owe us, right?
Yes, I do.
The cost of the lower basin, the information, the document, the date for her, and then we're gonna be gathering that for her. Um, is that's, that's what's owed at this point, right?
Yes.
We're gonna have a special meeting on all this?
Potentially, depending on what I find and how quickly we gotta move. I might ask you to have a special meeting that'll be a closed session.
We gotta do what takes, take. That's what, thank you for that.
With the pipe, though, we're gonna have, that'll be a special meeting?
Should be, I guess.
If you have a piece of good news tonight, there is a.
You shouldn't start it with that.
So, a new, a new grant opened today. It's the American Recovery Plan Act. The city got ARPA money, as you all know. The governor of Missouri got his ARPA money. And he is, he is creating a competitive. he's creating a competitive, um, application process to give that away. It opened today, and it closes July fourteenth. Just like SRF or USDA, you guys have heard of those. Those have loans involved and create debt, but those, this is no debt. So, you can match one dollar, you can match ten percent, you can match whatever. The more you match, the more your, your own cash you put up for a project, the more likely you are to get more points and possibly win. You can submit on water and wastewater. You can submit one of each. Uh, if there's projects the city has in mind, I, I know there's always things on your list. If this is something, I know we're in the midst of a lot of things right now. If there's something on your mind, if there's something the supervisors are needing, this is a great opportunity to submit. Uh, it's gonna be fiercely competitive.
It's an opportunity for us to offset some of our costs in this present situation we're in.
I did actually have a conversation with Mary Calpino, is that right?
Calpino.
Okay, thank you. She's working with Missouri Water now. She used to be, um, in Moberly, the city of Moberly. Um, and she came and talked to me about some of the same stuff with the ARBA money, and, um, so, dragged me to the web, uh, webinar that they had last week. And so, I was on that. Um, it sounded to me like we could apply in each of their different pots of money if we qualify for water, wastewater, and stormwater, so the three different pots, but only one project in each of those.
That's right.
Okay.
So, I'm just like, what if it's the Methodist lift station? You know, that might be one. I know you guys have talked about rehabbing. It's around a four thousand dollar project. If you put forty thousand dollars in of committed money, you have to sign a paper saying you have it, ten percent. And you might get that in October, you'll find out if you get it.
Could we do, um, so, we had already talked about the possibility of doing some, uh, additional money for sewer main lining, which we have put, um, two hundred thousand of our own ARBA money into that over the next two years.
Yes.
So, could we add that into the lift station and the sewer main lining as, as like one project total?
Yes, yes, you can.
There you go.
Things that you truly need, because if you get this, it's gonna be available, you know, ten times as many. So, I know there's a lot going on right now, and there's, but this is just an opportunity to, and we have, we have sixty days, so I wanted to get some feelers after that.
You guys had a peer report on that project, a preliminary engineering report for the lift station and the sewer lining already done?
We do not. So, those would have to be developed, and it's, I'm talking bare bones. We would do a, a three-page report just to pass the, let's get it submitted, you know.
I didn't know if we had that or something else.
Yep. So, there's a little bit of work on the application process. It's not, it's not a zero effort, effort, uh, application, but it's, it's out there, so. Is there anything else the council would like me to say for on the agenda?
I don't cover a lot.
Appreciate you guys coming out again.
Thanks.
See you next time.
See you a few days.
We'll get her a kiss.
We'll figure it out.
So, are you gonna contact Terrica tonight, tomorrow? What are we doing with that?
I'm calling them all.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's what I was just checking on, so.
Yes, I will call them all.
Should we let Terrence know more?
Okay.
Is there a plan there?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll call Mark.
Dollars and cents.
All right. No, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to, uh, that closes six discussion. We'll get to the others, like, um, looks to seven, comments for citizens. Um, as I said earlier, I had received none on the hearing part of it, and I had none from, uh, any emails. I did have, I did have a phone call from someone that, uh, had seen city vehicles at fire, uh, situations after work. And the reason I say that is, I talked about it. It was when we had the meeting, the meetings, and two people had to leave. One had to leave with...
I'm sorry, it was a spider. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Sorry.
I didn't know what she was doing.
I'm sorry.
My leg is killing me. I didn't think I said anything that out of line so far. I missed you. Glad you're back. Um, that being said, um, I, I addressed it with him, told him that what it was going on, checked on it. It was from a special meeting. He was here in town at work. He wasn't gonna move back and forth. Also brought up about one of the parks vehicles being at, 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 uh, fire scenes of an evening, and that's been discussed with the park board and the president and them, and, uh, that has been, uh, been addressed. So, just wanna bring that up, those that came up, so.
Do you wanna discuss the comment that Harold received?
Sure. What do you find? What you got, sir?
So.
Oh, yes.
We have received, the city had received, um, a notice from a citizen that wanted to, instead of cutting their grass, make it a native grass, like a habitat, and get it declared through the Department of Conservation, um, as an area that they could create for native grasses. And we said no, that we had a weed ordinance that they would have to cut the grass. So, they actually had, apparently, they, so they reached out to their aldermen, and, um, looks like they had a, a meeting with the Department of Conservation today, um, and that they will write a native grass management plan that they could provide to the city. We are still, we still oppose it as, you know, code enforcement. It's difficult for her to enforce codes if we allow one person to have this grassy area and we don't, and we make this person cut their grass.
You owe that care of work potentially, too. Everybody be signing up for this grass land thing. So, let's cut their yard. I mean, if they can, if they get the facilities, the factories and ability to do it, it's...
And, and the area that it is in, I don't know, we just see some issues that it could create. It's, um...
It's inside the city limits.
It's inside the city limits. It's right over by Columbia Street. It's like a tri, this triangle piece right here.
Columbia is orange.
Yeah, it's like this triangle piece right here. So, right along these railroad tracks. Okay.
We got no problem.
Does the board wants to what?
Overturn R no.
Is it gonna be only three inches?
It'd be, it'd be, I don't know, six football.
If it is, I want some, because it also grows that far.
Okay. No, thanks for bringing that forward. Um, so, we need comments from citizens. I'll close that. And that moves us to consent agenda. I would, sure, take a motion to, uh, I take a vote to approve all, uh, A through H, uh, motion, or we can separate it if we like to.
I'm not sure we accept the consent agenda as is.
Okay. Have first and second from Mr. Deckard. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, consent, and passes. That moves us to nine accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I was entertaining a motion. It's not the correct one here, right? Take the count payable, phase sixteen. That would be a grand total of two hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable over one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, a grand total amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. Finance, um, this would be, um, for, uh, finance bill number, what would the bill number be on this?
Three, four, five, two.
Okay. Two, four, five, two. Um, either ten motions, the first, only before a resolution of A, Finance, amending section four point two of the Syracuse County policy.
This is only to add to N, N A U A?
Yes, for it to be added to the policy.
Move the bill number of two, four, five, two be given its first and only reading by title only. Second.
I have a first and a second for bill number two, two, four, five, two to be given its first and only reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, wait a minute.
A resolution of the city of Centaria, Missouri, amending the formal written policy concerning purchasing and payments.
Move the bill number two, four, five, two be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
I have a first and a second for roll call vote. It'll sit, uh, bill number two, four, five, two. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Roll call vote, please. Tara.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Bill passes, two, four, five, two, resolution number?
R dash twenty-two dash eleven.
Thank you. That moves us to B, Finance, uh, bill number two, four, five, three. Doesn't make specific projects for ARBA funding. Uh, this is a resolution. Uh, motion for its first and only read.
Move the bill number two, four, five, three be given its first and only reading by title only. Second.
Have first and second for bill two, three, five, three be given its first, uh, reading by title only, only reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes.
A resolution designating a specific project to be funded from the city of Centaria, Missouri's American Rescue Plan Act, ARBA fund.
Move the bill number two, four, five, three be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
Have first and second for bill number two, four, five, three be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. Roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep. Passes, uh, which number is?
Four, R dash twenty-two dash one.
Legal tax report. Um, have that. Other finance, we're at. Is this up here?
No.
Nope. So, where's the, the legal tax?
The legal packet.
Okay. So.
Four.
Yeah.
You see a motion on those things.
To accept the report?
Yes.
Motion to accept the, uh, legal tax report, I see, that's in the packet.
Still move. Second.
Have first and second, accept the legal tax report, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Um, give a report on county tax abatements, uh, the other ten motions of, uh, approval.
Will we accept the report on county tax abatements? Second.
I have a first and a second to accept the report on county tax abatements. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. That moves us to island level legal. Uh, A is NPUA, mutual aid agreement, that would be bill number two, four, five, four. Um, it's an ordinance, starting at ten motion for its, uh, first and only reading by title only.
It's not only, it's an ordinance.
An ordinance, okay.
I move the bill number two, four, five, four be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
First and a second for, uh, bill number two, four, five, four be given its first reading, uh, by, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, wait a minute.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri to sign an NPUA mutual aid agreement.
Move the bill number two, four, five, four be given its second read by title only.
Second.
Have first and second for bill, bill number two, four, five, four to be given its second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri to sign an NPUA mutual aid agreement.
Move the bill number two, four, five, four be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
I have a first and a second for bill number two, four, five, four be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep. Bill number two, four, five, four passes. Uh, ordinance number?
Three, one, two, three.
Okay, moves us to B, legal. Uh, we've only partial land in four thirty-five South Terrace Street, R one to R two. It, uh, is bill number two, four, five, five.
Move the bill number two, four, five, five be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have first and second for bill number two, four, five, five be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes, please.
An ordinance changing the zoning of certain land in the city of Centaria, Missouri from zone district R one to zone district R two, and amending the zoning district map accordingly.
Move the bill number two, four, five, five be given its second reading by title only.
Second. Have first and second for...
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
I was for landing and zoning.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to ask you something.
That's why I recommended you.
Okay, all right, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, so I have a first and second, the second reading of bill number two, four, five, five. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, second reading, please.
An ordinance changing the zoning of certain land in the city of Centaria, Missouri from zone district R one to zone district R two, and amending the zoning district map accordingly.
Move the bill number two, four, five, five be given, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have first and second for bill number two, four, five, five be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, roll call vote, please, Tara, passes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Woken?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah. The ordinance number three, one.
Two, four.
That moves us to C. This would be bill number two, four, five, six, ARBA lease agreement. Uh, any discussion on yet?
Send the entire bid packet to the board, uh, and staff recommendation was to vote H and K Farms. If you all have any questions?
In alignment with the R I P.
Right, yes.
The, the, they will have good thoughts, and that wasn't in alignment with R I Ps.
We just have a, a second, we just have a lot of speculation, but I, I don't know where you'd go with that.
Move the bill number two, four, five, six be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have first and second that bill number two, four, five, six be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, treat them.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri to execute a farm lease agreement with H and K Farms of Madison, Missouri. That is supposed to say Centaria, Missouri, or change, uh, the location, where that would be sent to. So, it's changed in the body, but not in the title. It's just Centaria to Madison. Does it have to be changed in the...
No, you're just gonna...
Oh, accepted with a change.
Accepted with a change. It doesn't, it does not impact the, the guts of the women's, essentially. It's just the title.
But, no, it's changed.
Would it have to say as amended?
Yeah.
Yes.
Move the bill number two, four, five, six be given its second read as amended by title only. Second.
Have first and second that bill two, four, five, six be given its second read as amended, uh, by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri to execute a farm lease agreement with H and K Farms of Centaria, Missouri.
Move the bill number two, four, five, six be adopted by roll call vote as amended.
Second.
Have first and second for bill number two, four, five, six be adopted by roll call vote as amended, uh, by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Tara, passes, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Passes, thank you, that'll be three, one, two, five. That moves us to bill number, uh, two, four, five, seven. Yeah, I was gonna say, we should talk about this.
Um, we received two bids, and we opened those today. So I updated the ordinance, um, with the information with the, um, lowest bidder, which is Christianson Construction Company. They've done our asphalt overlay the last few years. Uh, they came in at ninety-one dollars a ton, and then two dollars and fifty cents a square yard for milling. However, um, their total bid was three hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for everything that we had put in, and we had only budgeted about three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So we have some streets that we have been able to take off our priority list. There were three of them that would reduce the cost by forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars, if it all came out okay. So, uh, we were just concerned that, uh, one of the priority streets is Campbell Street, and if we get in there and it needs more than what, um, the forty, you know, there's a forty thousand dollar difference in what we budgeted and what the contractor, what they, what they bid. So, if we have this extra cushion of seven thousand, almost eight thousand dollars, then if Campbell Street takes a little bit extra, then we have that built in, if that makes sense. If we take these three streets out of our plan, and they would be put as priority streets for next year.
And Jefferson and Campbell and the others?
Jefferson and Campbell were the highest priority streets.
Right.
What streets did you take out?
We took out Sim Street, um, just a short stretch of Sims that's over between Maple and Booth, or, sorry, Maple and Walnut, and then, um, Stone Street and Maple Street.
I move the bill number two, four, five, seven, be given its first reading by title only.
I have first and a second for bill number two, four, five, seven, to be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a contract with Christianson Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, relating to installation of asphalt overlays on several streets.
Move the bill number two, four, five, seven, be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a first and a second for bill number two, four, five, seven, be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a contract with Christianson Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, relating to installation of asphalt overlays on several city streets.
Move the bill number two, four, five, seven, be adopted by roll call votes.
Second.
I have first and a second for bill number two, four, five, seven, be adopted by a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Passes, three, one, two, six. That moves us to bill number, uh, E, legal, Centralia Retirement Final, twenty-four, fifty-eight. Discussion on that. It's got changed a little bit. The changes that we talked about was to limit, um, exposure to a lot of cost of potential retirement at one time, like something we always had to be concerned about. But, uh, we wanted to get to a point where somebody got a thing, especially through the years and so forth, to, to go, uh, that they would have the ability to, to leave. Social security interests, I guess, so, that's why that...
Our, our markers is relevant, right?
Yes.
So this actually requires someone to be here for the eighty-four, eighty-five years age and...
Right.
It wouldn't have to be.
They need to retire at that point.
The police teams are signing.
Really as in today, like right now?
The numbers combined actually have to be at the eighty-four, eighty-five year range. So it actually is an encouragement for...
People stay.
People stay a couple of extra years. But if they reach that point where they're within a year and need to step out or want to step out for one reason or another, they can.
And with that combination, you know, they, they dedicated a lot to the city at that point in being, being there for us, which is the bill, is, is cost effective, right?
It's what, sixty-four and twenty-five years of experience, but, or ten year? Yeah, and they put a lot of time in there, so.
So, that's what, that's what it was, so. Okay, so I, I would, uh...
Move the bill number two, four, five, eight, be given its first and only reading by title only.
Second.
I have first and a second for bill number two, four, five, eight, to be given its first and only reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
A resolution establishing an early retirement incentive program policy for the employees of the city of Centralia.
Move the bill number two, four, five, eight, be adopted by a roll call vote.
Second.
I have a first, first and a second for... This is like Jeopardy, man. This is like Jeopardy, you got every dog, didn't you?
No way, please, no.
Harold got blamed early, though, I was glad. So anyway, so I have a, a, the first and a second for bill number two, four, five, eight, to be given its, needs to be adopted by a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The pass is roll call vote, please.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Deckard?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
All right, that gets us permits and licensing.
Still not.
Still not, okay. Moves us, that moves us to purchasing street, Department of Pipe, for High School Ditch.
So we don't have a revised Fourth of July fireworks?
It's in the... Yeah, there's a, there's a bill in here.
It should have been on the agenda. It's in the packet. We can't do it, no?
It's not on the agenda, and it's not on the registration, it wasn't previously entered, you can't.
Let's do it, June.
Let's do it, June. Sorry.
Or during the special meeting.
Unless we have a special meeting, that, yeah, right, then we're probably gonna have it. So we can do it.
Okay. That's okay, we're already advertising for it, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna be a problem, but we'll figure that.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about this a little bit, this, the purchasing side? We talked about, you know, the fact that we may be gonna try to get that ARPA money, and in doing so, with the pipe is out there, we need to probably purchase the pipe regardless. Just what our thought was, we didn't want to hold off on that because of, you know, what cost you're gonna be.
Do you think that we'll run into issues with the state's procurement requirements? No, okay. So, our, our recommendation would be to go ahead and order this pipe. This would be part of our match for whatever money that we ask for for stormwater, and that stormwater ARPA pot, we may or may not get it, but, um...
This was substantially, substantially under budget if we get it now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the other, well, for the other portion that was the plastic pipe, we have already purchased that because it was under the threshold for the board, needed board approval. It was, um, under the twenty thousand dollars. So, we already have that in the works, but this needs board approval.
So if, uh, if the, uh, change that's being proposed is under twenty K, you can just move ahead with that?
We will not, not on that project. We will bring the change order together.
The good thing is, by having that bill accounted, it counts as our match, which gives us our points, and we go ahead and give a chance to give a big part of that money to finish that project. So that would be very helpful to the point for us, so, good.
I move that we, we proceed with the purchase of the pipe for seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents.
Okay. I have a first and a second, Alderman Deckard, uh, purchasing sheet of the pipe for the High School Ditch. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Old business, um, kinda old business. Guy new business. That moves us to the mayor, uh, appointments. I would entertain a motion. Can I do it collectively for all of these people at one time, or that?
You have to just, you have to just say who you are, and then you can make...
That's what I'm saying, I can make that, yeah.
Just name them, and then make a statement.
Okay, so, I would, I would entertain a motion for the cemetery board reappoint, uh, Lawrence Tinker, Dawson, and Greg Pollitt for three-year cemetery board, uh, term. Additionally, Clark Boyd appointment of John Wheeler to replace Marilyn Dick. Volunteer firefighter, appointment of Kilby Stevens to the Centralia Fire Department as volunteer firefighter.
Make a motion, we approve the mayor's appointments, uh, as stated.
I have a second. You choose. We, it would be...
I said the lady. I was the lady first.
So anyway, thanks. I have a first, I have a first and a second, uh, I'm gonna get the button if I can. I have a first and a second, uh, approving, uh, the mayor's, uh, suggested appointments. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. That moves the city administrator, both in court.
Court is in the packet, if you have questions, please let me know.
We'll do it there. All right, that moves to sixteen, our senior attorney.
Obviously, I'm gonna be busy the next couple of days, but also, um, I'm going to tag team with Tara on a couple of your, or not Tara, sorry, with Heather on some of your grant writing stuff, because I'm a now certified grant writer, and I, I kind of enjoy that, and it's probably going to be a much needed stress reliever to help her write a grant. But other than that, we, I do continue to monitor the ARPA grant process and the release of the new dollars that the governor's putting out, and there will be another round of competitive applications that will be released approximately the first part of June, which will be for those community type of projects. And I haven't heard if the city has identified any, but I want to make sure.
Just the police station.
Police.
The police station.
We're looking to do police entire in one?
Yeah, if we did, yeah.
For, and that's going to be for building projects?
Yes.
So you will need a preliminary engineering report. They can tell you that already right now, you're gonna need that for any grade, so you will need what's called a P R, preliminary engineering report. So if that is something that you intend to pursue, um, that will be part of the requirement,